All right, I will call this to order. Will you please join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Rob. Will you please call the roll?
Emily Ewaw, Syndra Keeler, Tom Lingby, Brian Miller, Glenn Newcomer.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer.
Here.
Thank you.
We have in your packet the May regular, May 25th and June 1st special meeting minutes. If you have no additions or corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I've got Glenn and second by Tom. Please call the roll.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And we are at the time in our meeting, we have public participation, and I know we have a guest today.
So Eric, if you'd like to come over and introduce yourself to the board, that'd be great.
Do I look this way or not?
You can look this way and you can introduce yourself to the board.
Okay, I am Eric Gendron. I'm currently a Life Scout. I'm working toward my Eagle for my Eagle project this summer. I'm looking to build a shed for the Eden Public Library since they're running out of space. And I'm here to work on my communication and citizenship in the community merit badges.
Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome, thanks for coming. If there's no other public participation, Syndra, you have a four-count report.
Just real quick, the students got their passports on May 22nd and then we're part of our, of course, graduation here on June 11th. And otherwise, it's just summer building projects to keep things all in order for the next school year to start again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ross, where am I ready for the treasurer's report?
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the financial reports for the month ended May 31, 2017. Our cash reconciliation report, that Farmers and Merchant State Banks, a balance of $7,451,261. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $65,137. At Star Ohio, a balance of $3,258,751. At Morgan Stanley, $10,692,844. And at State Bank, $6,145,788. Petty cash and change funds total, $5,050. Total funds on hand, $27,488,557. Of those balances, the general fund balance was $13,867,661. Permanent improvement fund, $2,346,577. The capital project fund, local share, $6,081,498. Capital project fund state share, $2,392,430. Once again, $27,488,557. Our SM2 report for the month, our revenues tracking about $261,000 ahead of budget for the year. And our expenses were about $385,000, the $75,000 variance on the advance out. I processed that in May and I had it targeted in June, so we have a little difference in timing there. So our budget variance for the year is about $650,000 to the positive. Any questions on those reports?
Yes, sir.
We'll look at amended appropriations next. Appropriation amount, at the end of May, $38,202,715. Appropriation changes during the month totaled $8,862. Temporary appropriations for the upcoming school year, we place these appropriations so we have funds in place to start the new school year, our new fiscal year on July 1. Our total appropriations for temporary appropriations are $24,329,156. Of that, the general fund temporary appropriations are $20,996,271. Any questions on appropriations?
Yes, sir.
Next, we'll move on. We ask the board's permission to participate in all federal programs for the 2017-18 school year, including all federal grants. We ask the board's permission to participate in 2017-18 federal lunch and breakfast program, including free and reduced lunches, breakfast, and commodity programs.
Can you tell about what percentage we have roughly?
Free and reduced, it's about 50% right now, or is it more than that?
District-wise, it's about 40%.
Forty, district-wise.
Forty over the district? Higher at the elementary, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Higher at the elementary, yes.
That's the closer to 50%.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We are presenting property liability auto insurance quote from Walters and Peck for the upcoming fiscal year, July 1 through June 30, 2018, $75,412. We will be tweaking that a little bit as we reduce our property values as we tear down the Washington and high school buildings. Ask your permission to approve the technical service agreement for fiscal year 2018 with Northern Buckeye Education Council. We ask your permission to transfer the net difference between the rental income and the operating expenses for the central building education wing from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund. That's an exercise we do annually to transfer our profits to the permanent improvement fund from the general fund on Fountain City Christian School lease. We ask your permission to approve an update to the lease renewal with Fountain City Christian School for the period September 1, 2017 to August 31, 2018. Fountain City is going to lease the first floor, which Bryan City School District was currently occupying. It will produce about $24,000 additional revenue for the district for the year. We ask your permission to approve the milk bid submitted for the 2017-18 school year with Defiance Dairy as recommended by Mr. Bassett. We ask for your approval for a payment plan with Caitlin Burnett, the set by the district treasurer. We have donations that we'd like to mention, the Pole Vault Poles valued at $1,114 from the Athletic Booster Club to the track team, $76 from the junior class post-prom parents to the Bear Bag Program, and a donation from George and Julie Brown through the Bryan Area Foundation, and the amount of $1,000 to our music program. We'll stop there for now, get approval on those.
Are there any questions regarding Mr. Ross, where am I supposed to report?
Rob, on the central building with Fountain City Christian, how is that tracking expenses to revenue?
About $40,000 profit a year on that. It's, that would be low end.
All right, and just roughly, where do we sit with relative, our income relative to the initial, or the original investment?
We have covered, we have covered the investment for the second and third floor on the Fountain City side. We have not covered yet totally our investment on the first floor, but we are working closely to it. I'll bring you some exact numbers. After we get all the transfers made at the end of this month, I'll report next month to you and give you the exact number.
We've been occupying the first floor, so.
We've occupied the first floor.
This is the first year that we've received rental.
We're very fortunate we had the first floor because it's worked out very well for us for preschool and some of our administration offices. So it's been very valuable space for the district for having, to have that first floor and the remodeled condition and so forth. It's wonderful space.
Thank you.
There are no other questions? Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Syndra?
Second.
Tom, second?
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you. And one final item here, your approval on change order number 136 for the pre-K to 5 construction project. The amount of that change order is $55,975. This is to replace some of the doors that were not originally in the bid. We, after looking at the project, Mr. Ruffer had come back and recommended that we replace all the doors. So this is the cost to finish replacing doors, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's $55,975.
Unfarmed throughout the building, yes.
Correct, we'll have completely new doors all throughout.
All right, motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Glenn, second, please?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. Please call the roll.
Ryan?
I'm waiting for Tom.
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my report, thank you.
Old business, Mr. Savage?
Under old business, on a construction update, just some multiple reminders for the board and the community. First off, we'll start at Washington. Our auction of furniture and fixtures and some equipment will be held this Thursday. So come on out to Washington for our auction, it'll start at 4:00 PM.
Anyone can come?
Anyone can come, and we're, we welcome all to come. And then, following the auction this week, the abatement of the asbestos and the demolition of that building will begin on July 1. So we will wrap up our occupancy of Washington and allow that demolition process to begin. Moving on to Portland, there's been lots of questions regarding the auction at Portland. That will be held late September. We're finalizing the date tonight with the contract approval later on, set for September 21st. That will also be a week, I think it's a Thursday as well. And we are out right now, we're finishing up the bids for the demolition and the abatement of Portland. Currently, right now, the Portland campus is providing us some great space to store all of our educational supplies and things that we need to transfer into the new building once it's open. So that process has begun as well. At the new pre-K to 5 building, we are still on track as far as the date. In the most complete part, in the academic wing on the second floor, the carpeting is installed. They're starting to clean and work on punch list items to finish. When we move down towards the office, the furniture is installed, carpeting will come soon. The media center has the carpet installed. They're working towards the cafeteria, they're starting to bring equipment in the cafeteria. They've installed the flooring there. The upstairs gym is getting a new wood floor that'll go in, I believe they told us in July. And once the air conditioning and the climate control is all set and working, the kindergarten wings and preschool special ed are having the cabinet reinstalled and will work towards flooring. In the playground, half of it is poured with cement half for basketball and sports games and other games involving concrete space. And then, the other half will start going in in a couple of weeks. And that is things that kids can spin on, swing on, balance on, climb on, all those motor functions that help improve balance and get them a good, allow them to release some of their energy. So we're excited about that as well. In a reminder, there is a playground for grades 1 to 5 and a playground for grades pre-K to K. So those are two separate areas. In terms of the 6 to 12 building, we are currently in cleaning mode with our staff and doing some touch-ups. One of the things that we are working on though to correct, that we had to wait until summer, is our cafeteria floor. Our cafeteria floor, the grout was just not what we, it just wasn't right. So they've agreed to fix it and they'll be working on that this summer. So our cafeteria will be kind of under reconstruction as they fix those things as promised in our warranty, in those things that need addressed. So Tom, Glenn, were with me as we toured the building last Thursday, anything that I missed in that?
I just think that the Business Advisory Board that went with us, they were all extremely impressed with the layout design. They, when they could visually see the layout of the rooms and the finished product, the lockers in place, the different floor plans for the different grade levels, the addition of the media center, went to second floor. I think they were all extremely impressed with the overall appearance of it. And one of them said that he's more excited about the public seeing that than the new high school because of the transformation that it's going through. And it truly is remarkable, the changes that the public will see once the building is opened.
And we are working on a dedication for that building. So we've proposed and hope to finalize Sunday, I believe it's September 10. I'm going to look at my calendar real quick. As our dedication day, September 10, as our dedication day and open house for the public to do just that, to visit the building and see the transformation that has happened. So we'll get some more announcements out about that as well. Tom, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just concur with what Glenn had said and what you have already said. The building appears to be coming along quite well. And I guess I'm most pleased with the fact that there's just been a nice sequential progression of the entire project. Didn't get things out of sequence and it's just made for a nicer flow of the overall construction activity.
I would agree. Also, under new business, it is not listed on our agenda, but one item that was presented last month for the board's consideration, Coach Redhead and Coach Nice were here to talk about dual sports. If you could, as a board, just give me some directive of where we are with that, what you would like me to see, if there's any additional information that I could provide to you.
Danny, I would say we've had some discussion about this as a board individually and collectively. And we are interested in approving that on a trial basis.
Okay.
What we would like to see is, we're not ready to change the policy. So we'd like you to contact the attorney and see if there can be some kind of memorandum to allow for a one-year trial of the dual sports policy. With the understanding, if it goes well, we can continue and expand it. And if it goes poorly, we are not married to that, to that change in how we do business. Would you like to, anyone like to chime in on that, have any discussion about, any thoughts on that?
I've heard from various community members in support of it. Some have made very well thought out, well reasoned, you know, arguments in support of it. I agree, I think we should consider it for one year. And assuming it goes well, which I'm sure with our staff administrators and team involved, they'll keep their eyes and ears on it, you know, we'd be looking to go with that. But I think on a one-year basis, I think you're right.
We'll see how it goes. And again, certainly it will not be for every student athlete, but there'll be certain student athletes that can benefit from this and certain team sports that can, that can recognize and benefit from trying this product, this new way of allowing sports participation.
Okay, so I will.
So if you could please.
I will do that. I will follow up on my end by contacting the attorney and getting something ready for, we do, we're going to talk later about a special board meeting or for next month's for full board approval.
So I don't think that we're ready to approve a motion.
Correct.
But I want the public to be aware that the board is in support of trying this for one year and seeing if it goes.
Okay, I will work on that and get that to you at one of the next two meetings.
I understand, there may be some tweaks that need to happen even throughout the process or at the end of the one year. If it seems to be going pretty well, but there's some things that could be improved, then we'll certainly be looking to do that.
I think it was clearly shared at the last meeting that, you know, neighboring school districts are doing this and.
To their benefit.
I think, yeah, and I think we owe it to our students to give them the opportunity to have the same level of participation, opportunity. And so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you very much. Next, moving into new business, under superintendent recommendations, under administrative recommendations, we have approval, ask for board approval of an MOU with the NWO ESC for PBIS, Positive Supports Intervention System. This is an MOU, we've been working with the grant and with the ESC on our Positive Behavior Intervention System. And this will allow that work to continue through the next school year. We ask approval of the board for the service agreement with Central Ohio Medical Review LLC for the 17-18 school year. This is the company that helps us with our Medicaid billing. We ask board approval of overnight trip requests for girls' basketball, swimming, and volleyball. These are annual trips that the girls take to different camps. We get those approved in July so that the board is aware of those activities. We ask for board approval of the affiliation agreement with Northwest State Community College Nursing Program. Off and on, the Northwest State will place student nurse residents with us to work with our school nurse. And this agreement allows us to have that partnership with Northwest State and provide that mentoring service for nursing students. Ask for board approval of MOU with Defiance College for hosting educational interns and practicum students. Very similar, these are young teacher education students that are doing some of their lab and practicum work with us and with our teachers. Ask for board approval of a resolution authorizing 2017-18 membership in the OHSAA for both our middle school and high school. Ask for board approval of a resolution approving participation with the ACE Digital Academy for the 17-18 school year. This is the company that provides our online curriculum for our online students. Ask for board approval of the Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training Rehab Center Educational Agreement. This is utilized when our students are placed with the juvenile detention system. Ask for board approval of the auction contract for our Portland auction with Halik Realty that will be held, as we said, in September. Ask for board approval of deed of easement to the City of Bryan, and then next, a quitclaim deed to the City of Bryan. So let me explain these two documents a little bit. The sidewalk path, walking path that goes along Washington and the park system is actually located on school property. And it is in need of repair. And the city is willing to do those repairs. However, the city cannot repair something that it does not own. So this agreement would allow us to, as a board, you would be approving to change ownership of that sidewalk property to the City of Bryan with the easement belonging to us. And if I'm saying that incorrectly, Mr. Ross, where am I, you help me out.
I think you have.
So again, this is only for the sidewalk property and the walking path.
Just that little strip of property that goes along.
It's that little strip that goes right along the park.
That little softball field we will still retain.
We will still retain the soccer, the softball fields and all of the other acreage at Washington.
Just a little strip where the walking path is and enough room for them to repair it.
Correct.
Any questions?
So questions on any of those items?
Well, that strip though, they, the city owns.
Half of it.
The other, well, they own the other side of that strip, right?
They own the other side where the light posts are.
Yeah. And utilities.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, a motion to approve all of those recommendations from the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, second. Thank you, Syndra. Please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the addendum, under superintendent recommendations, the Bryan Soccer Association had approached the school district and the board seeking a donation towards their light project. And so with your approval, we would donate $10,000 to the Bryan Soccer Association to help support their light project, their field lights at the Varsity Field, which is located at Bryan Recreational Park. This is much due in fact to the reasoning that we, our athletes, use this facility. And the purpose has been explained in the request is that it will allow us to expand and give more students more opportunities for junior varsity games. So it does, I think it would be a good gesture to show support of this project. And I ask for board approval of that recommendation.
And those monies will be coming from the permanent improvement fund?
Okay, I think that's our long-term. Well, certainly, you know, we thank the parks for allowing us to use their fields because that's what we do. And the cost of us to build and maintain our own field would be significantly more. So I think that's a great idea to participate in them improving the field that we use. Any other discussion? If not, a motion to approve that donation to Bryan Soccer Association? All so moved, thank you, Syndra, second?
Second.
Tom? Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under commendations, we'd like to celebrate once again a little bit of graduation. We have the Class of 2017 Top 10%, the Class of 2017 Honors Diploma recipients. And for all of our students, the Fourth Quarter All-A Honor Roll for grades 9 through 12. We'd like to congratulate Parker Harris on his participation in the state track and field meet in Pole Vault. That was his second year being, qualifying for the state meet. Under middle school, our May Students of Actions for grades 6, 7, and 8. Our All-A Honor Roll for grades 7 and 8, as well as our Top 10% for grades 7 and 8. And I, whoops, I missed, our All-A Honor Roll for grade 6 as well. So congratulations to all of those students in our secondary building on all of their accomplishments. At the Bryan Elementary campuses, we have the Character Trade Awards for enthusiasm for both the Portland campus and the Washington Elementary campus. We also have PE Gold Slip winners, Kason Perez, Levi Crocker, Chloe Davis, and Gold Slip Winners of the Year, Devon Kaiser and Jack Ridgeway and Piper Hannah. And then our Character Bear classrooms were Mrs. Boyers and Mrs. Schilling's classrooms this month.
I move to approve the commendations for the month.
Thank you, Glenn, second, please?
Second.
Tom, please call the roll.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, we accept with regret the resignations of Dennis Schultz as bus driver effective June 7. Colton Royer, high school intervention teacher and middle school football coach, effective May 30. Doug Billman, high school health and PE teacher, effective June 30. We would like to offer a one-year limited teaching contract to Lauren Lockwood, grade 5 intervention, master's level, nine years experience on the A1 salary schedule, pending receipt of her Ohio license. She's coming in from out of state. And Sarah Nocheck, elementary CC classroom teacher, bachelor's level, three years experience on the A1 salary schedule. Sarah is coming to us from another local district. Transfer of classified personnel for the next school year, Peggy Harvey, to 612 salad bar attendant, server, 4.75 hours per day. We found that our salad bar was so popular that we need a set of hands on it at all times. So she is going to assist with that and also assist with serving. And then Carrie Keck to pre-K to 5 head cashier at five hours per day. Transfer certificated personnel for next school year, Nicole Manahan to elementary CC teacher, Chad Savage to 6 to 12 health PE teacher, and Lyndon Spees to grades 3 to 5 elementary PE teacher. Extended time contracts for our guidance counselors, music with Richwell, our technology and librarian Andrea Bible, Amber Fransdorf, Jamie Morris, and then our speech therapist Christine Alt and Rebecca Kuhn. Supplemental contracts, middle school Quiz Bowl, Lisa Heslop, choir accompaniess, which is paid at our tutor rate, Laura Knight, assistant musical director Laura Knight, musical accompaniess Patricia Breland, fall play director Betsy Zuber, assistant fall play director Heather Teagarden, Set 1 and 2 director Bernie Davis, and assistant girls tennis coach Hannah Renalet. Substitutes for our classified staff are listed, as well as volunteers for our athletic department, Brian Arnold, Evan Davies, and Matt Smith.
Okay. Questions on those? Motion to approve the personnel recommendations, please.
So moved.
Ryan?
Second.
Thank you, Glenn, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
On number three, I'm going to defer a little bit to Mr. Bassett, who helped coordinate the selection of our textbooks for the upcoming year. So the list of the publisher and titles and grade levels are listed for you. But Chad, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we just committee for each of these, grade level representatives or department representatives, that we be narrowing down our choices, have some representatives from these companies come in and take a look at what best served us. You see the upper grades, 6, 7, 8, even the AP Biology. We say textbooks there, but we're really meaning on the Chromebook. What we've done is decided to go with a classroom set. So they do have a classroom set of hardbound physical textbooks.
They have one, one set of books and somebody wants to turn the pages.
So my classroom, if I'm teaching psychology, I have a set of 30 textbooks in there. And as kids rotate through the day, we have a physical book we can use, but every kid has a license on their computer in the Chromebook for the same textbook.
So when they say, "I don't have my book at home," yeah, mom and dad, no.
Yeah. So it's with them, if we do have a kid that, you know, doesn't have it or. Yeah. So, it's with them. But if we do have a kid that, you know, doesn't have internet at home, whatever it may be-
They can check out the book, maybe take it home.
We're ready to make that jump completely to-
Sure.
-paperless, but we're getting closer. Fifth grade, the addition of Chromebooks two has also jumped on that as well. They think they're gonna be fine with, it's a classroom set. And then, everything else is on the Chromebook, so.
Good.
Questions you have about them? Who else has?
I don't think so. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Tom, second, please?
Second.
Ryan, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, under board policy items. So, in the first section, we have our second reading and approval of the following board policy items. These were recommended by Neola. These are due to changes at state or federal levels with laws and requirements. If there are any questions, I would gladly answer them for you.
I don't think so. A lot of, you know, Neola keeps us up to date with our legal requirements to make sure our policy is in line with law requirements.
And then, just as a FYI, once the board approves them, my process is, we send them back to Neola. So, Neola uploads them to our website. So, anyone in the community has full access to our board policies at any time.
Right. There's a link they can go on.
There's a link they can go to. And I also send an email out to all of our staff so that they're aware of the specific numbers that have changed or been updated so that they can look and see what has changed, if they so choose to do.
Sure. Okay. I appreciate that. I'll move to accept the board policy changes. Thank you, Syndra. Second, please?
Second.
Glenn, please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, I will explain a little bit of the next one. So, this also came as a recommendation from Neola. But it is in direct response to the state making changes to our gifted policies. That has to be in place by July 1st. So, I'm asking the board to waive the first reading and to immediately go to the first and second reading and approval of the gifted education and identification. What the major changes, they've put in more stringent requirements for teachers to be deemed gifted teachers in the classroom or to serve gifted students. Teachers must have a minimum of 30 hours of highly qualified professional development in year one and in year two, and then ongoing professional development after that. They've also changed-
In gifted education or subject matter education?
Gifted.
Specifically in gifted education?
Specifically, it has to be approved gifted training.
Do we have any teachers that are in that qualification?
We found that our teachers can get an actual license in gifted in a much shorter time period than they can meet the new state requirements.
So, they're, so I'm guessing they're working with you.
They are working with me and they are following that route.
Good.
And then, the second major change is the identification. We must now test and provide up to two tests per year, per child, whole grade level, for reading, math, overall gifted cognitive, um-
Science?
No, not science. And creative, creativity.
Creative arts, yeah.
Creative arts. And so, we'll do that at grade two and at grade six. We have to whole grade test both of those. And then, if there are any students that are close or on the edge, we have to retest them up to two times per, per that grade band.
Okay. Well, we can't bite to y'all sometimes. With that explanation, thank you for that detailed explanation. And I would entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading and approval of the board policy item regarding gifted education and identification.
So moved.
Tom, second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Legislative update. So, the House released their version. The Senate released their version. To my knowledge, there's still some compromise going on. I'm looking at Chad and Rob because all three of us have been following this very closely. We hoped that it's in place by July 1st, but with today being June 20th, we're not sure.
Sure.
And, we've heard some good things, like elimination of resident educator program and possible elimination of third grade reading guarantee, but we're not positive. It's not in both versions. So, wait and see. Wait and see on that. Board meeting dates. Board retreat work session was held today. Our next Board of Education meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, is Monday, July 19th at 7:00 P. M. But we would like to schedule a special board meeting for June 29th. Is that correct?
7:00 A. M.
At 7:00 A. M. on a Thursday. So, Thursday, June 29th at 7:00 A. M. For the purpose of-
Final appropriation approval for this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rob.
It's Monday, July 19th. Is that the-
That is the regularly scheduled board.
No, it's what she's saying is-
Is the 19th really on my luck?
Oh, I think that's the right date.
Let me look.
Good point. I don't think it is.
I don't, I don't think it is.
You don't think it is?
No.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Thank you.
Just to make clarification.
Good.
Good clarification.
Good catch. Okay. Monday, July 17th at 7:00 P. M.
That's right. The 19th can't be.
And then, we just had our business advisory committee meeting was held June 15th at 7:00 A. M. So, any other discussion items from the board?
I don't think so. I'd just like to express our appreciation for the time that the administrators spent today with us and giving us an update and letting us know where we are and having some discussions about where we're going in this new exciting year coming, coming ahead. Everybody in the same building for the elementary, that's exciting.
Correct.
Continue down the changes coming for the high school. So, thank you both. Thank all of you for your time today.
All right. So, we do have Mark and Chad here to present. Karen had a commitment with her ballgame with her daughter. And Eric had some commitments as well. So, we are so glad you're here.
Can't stay away.
Can't stay away, no. Just a little bit on that third grade reading guarantee. They did up it this year. Like we said, it's kind of a limbo. We don't know whether it's gonna actually play out for next year or not. We'll wait and see. Cut score used to be a 42, it's a 44 this year.
If they haven't.
If they haven't. So, we have to plan though, because that's retention. So, we have to plan like it's there. We just got our scores back this week. Preliminary, really raw data. As we broke those down, we looked at our kids. We have two kids that didn't make that 44 score.
Did they make 42?
I don't even look at that. I looked at 44 and went, okay, these are the two kids we have to plan for. So, what we need to do with those is we'll plan for August, bringing them in to do some remediation before school starts.
Do some summer school intervention.
Yeah. The state allows us to, an alternative test called the Terranova, to test them, different than the air. So, we'll try to get those kiddos through that.
So, there's a possibility that they could be proficient by-
Absolutely.
By the start of school.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, after you have the 44 cut score, be identified as special education. So, we have two kids that don't fall in those categories. We'll start planning for them to try and remediate them before school, depending on this still being in existence. Once again, we'd rather plan and then the state comes in.
Or maybe next week.
Third grade reading guarantees no more. And we say, okay, we go on from there. But either way, we know we need to intervene with these kids.
Sure.
Whether it goes away or not. So, we'll keep our tabs on that and see where it goes.
Yeah, again. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. Mr. Rary, we're so glad you could join us.
Yeah. We're still continuing our, I guess, preparation for 17-18. I mean, we're full throttle forward now as we're in summer mode. So, we're, I was just walking the village today after our board retreat and the custodial staff is hard at work. And I think count the days that they have in that short window for them of summer to get everything done with that standard maintenance. So, it's gonna move quick here throughout the summer. On the horizon for us, we have test scores coming from our state tests at the end of June. So, we'll break those down once we receive those. The scheduled date for that is June 27th, or so they say. So, we'll see when that, so when that comes to us, we'll break those down. And other than that, we just have some summer classes happening right now with summer PE and health and our OC, and then some credit recovery classes going on. So, we just wish our students a relaxing, safe summer. And we'll see everyone back late summer and early fall.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any need for executive session. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll, so moved. Syndra?